As easy and uncomplicated as possible.
What is, uh, which one are we, who's withdrawing?
Uh, the FIU issue is off the table.
It appears that no one from FIU is attending this evening, so it will be deferred to the next available meeting, which we will discuss subsequently on the date.
All right, well, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, January the fifth, twenty sixteen, at seven P. M. in council chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, please be seated. Roll call the board members, please.
Chair Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Excuse.
Commissioner Jason James.
Excused.
Commissioner Emmanuel Gentey.
Present.
Commissioner Peggy Boulay.
I don't know, she confirmed, did she not?
She did, unless she will be in a little bit later.
Okay, so she's running late.
Commissioner Bob Pishon.
Present.
And we have Commissioner Michael McDermide.
Present.
All right, thank you very much. We have an amendment to the agenda tonight, is that correct?
Uh, the only amendment that I'm aware of is the deferment of the second item, which is the FIU Campus Development Agreement. Seeing no one here representing FIU, I would suggest that we do not hear this item this evening as there is no one present to answer any of your questions.
That's fine, so we'll strike that from the agenda and we'll proceed then to PC twenty-two dash fifteen. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of North Miami, Florida approving a waiver of plat for the eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-four square feet parcel located at eight twenty-one northeast one hundred forty-fourth street, North Miami, Florida, three-three-one-six-one, with Miami-Dade Folio number zero-six-two-two-one-nine-zero-zero-six-zero-three-eight-zero. In accordance with Article Three, Division Eight, Section three dash eight-zero-two of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations, and Chapter twenty-eight, Section twenty-eight dash seven B of the Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinances, in order to subdivide said parcel into two individually-platted single-family lots measuring sixty-six feet by one hundred thirty-eight feet each, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Staff report, please.
As a point of order, Mr. Chair, I believe that we skipped Sections two and three of the agenda, approval of the minutes.
Oh, you're right, we did, sorry about that. Read right over that, you know. All right, we need a motion on the minutes.
Move for approval.
Charles Ernst, move to approve.
Second.
Bob Pishon, seconds, all in favor.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, just read, hand that up, and we'll give you a signature. And, uh, there are no communications, is that correct?
The only communication, uh, for the meeting on February, because the city council has been changed, the meeting has been changed to the February second, which is the first Tuesday where Planning Commission actually holds its meeting. So our meeting would be the following week, on the ninth.
So we will meet on the ninth?
Instead of the second. That will be the second Tuesday of February.
Which is, I think, generally okay with me, but I, if I don't change my calendar right now, I won't remember, so.
The council meeting has been moved?
Yes, uh, it was moved, um, to the second of February due to an event that council will be attending. They, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, they date city days in Tallahassee, so.
All right, well, on the second, that's Groundhog Day. I suppose we could take that as a holiday, right?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Ernst indicates he may have difficulty because that's commencing the next boat show. And he's very actively involved in that. So, let's put Planning Commission, spell this out, and get this in the phone now, because if I don't, I already have my office calendars filled out, so. Call at nine o'clock to be safe, and done. So Groundhog Day is, in theory, open. Let's, let's not put anything else on there, if we can avoid that. All right, thank you.
And are there any communications between any of the board members and any one of the applicants?
Wouldn't know them if I fell over them.
Thank you, you may proceed.
All right, staff report, please.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. This is, uh, an application that was initially heard on the December first meeting, and it was rescheduled, uh, because the applicant wasn't present, to answer communication from the commissioners. It's essentially the same recommendation as last time. It's basically, the applicant is an owner, is the owner of a overly-sized, you know, parcel, you know, which measures about, uh, almost eighteen thousand five hundred square feet. And then there's actually a single family on, uh, on one side of the lot, and the applicant is, uh, applying for this waiver of plat to split this lot into two lots. Both lots will meet on the minimum requirements of the zoning regulations, which is, you know, sixty foot wide by a minimum of a hundred feet, uh, deep. So it's, uh, as you see on the survey that was submitted, waiver of plat survey, those lots would be measured, you know, individually sixty-six feet by approximately a hundred and thirty-eight feet. And, um, we have, um, reviewed, uh, a, the, I think, you know, a, a, the proposed lot will be in compliance with what are already existing in the neighborhood. This is, like I said before, or in overly-sized parcels, and then, uh, it will meet all the requirements of, of the code when, um, if, uh, this waiver of plat is approved. We have also solicited, you know, inputs from outside agency and Quivin Thompson, which is our survey, a consulting surveying firm. They have reviewed and they have found, you know, have found, you know, the plat to meet the requirements of, you know, the Miami-Dade County, uh, Chapter twenty-eight. And also, uh, we have received, you know, letter of no objection, you know, from, uh, the many utility companies, uh, to with, you know, FPNL, AT&amp;T, Comcast, and TECO, PayPal's guys. And then also Public Works, you know, have reviewed, uh, uh, that waiver of plat. And there was no substantial comment that was, you know, uh, provided. So based on this record, uh, I mean, uh, we welcome an approval of the plat, you know. And then, uh, essentially, one of the thing, you know, I know at the last meeting, there were some issues regarding, you know, uh, the existing structure on the property. And then while, you know, the applicant, you know, in the letter of intent, you know, clearly mentioned that this structure will be brought up to code and then with, uh, which is also mentioned in the background section of this staff report. So we can also add a condition that, uh, if the waiver of plat is approved, that the property, which should be brought into compliance, not just, you know, for the setback per issue if that new lot line is created, but for all other violations that may exist on the property. And then I've also reviewed, you know, the building permits, you know, and I have copies here, I can provide all this. And then, uh, as it stands now, there is only one pending application, and then which has been denied by some of the disciplines, but the applicant is here and will be able to answer any question pertaining to that building. Although that, uh, application has really no bearing on the merit of this application. This is just simply to subdivide a lot and, and provide, you know, for two, uh, uh, code, you know, regulated, you know, a single-family lot. So staff recommend approval of this based on the conditions, and then, uh, we are open for any questions, thank you.
As a point of order, Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to offer one small amendment to the staff's report.
All right.
That would be, uh, page two of four. For the record, would be this public hearing history, second line where it begins with subsequently scheduled for a date certain, comma. As the applicant or any duly-appointed agent was not N.O.T., the addition of not present to answer the questions of the commissioners, because that is, in essence, why we're here today. And so I just wanted to make sure that, uh, for the record, that that word be added, thank you.
All right, duly noted, thank you very much. All right, uh, the applicant is present. Would the applicant please step to the microphone, state your name and address? And if you have anything to comment on, please feel free to do so.
My name is Sassy from Isco Strilte. Sorry for my accent, sorry for my voice. We basically bought the property from the bank.
For the record, sir, I'm sorry, what is your address?
My address, business address is two thirty-three North Federal Highway in Dania, Florida, three-three-zero-zero-four.
You may proceed, thank you.
So we bought the property from the bank. The property was really, really bad condition. We are taking the, we have the whole set of plan here to remodel the whole property from roof, bathroom, outside walls, the house gonna be brand-new, basically. Demolishing the existing structure of the garage to meet the setback of the lot. And then on the second lot, on the new lot, if you guys approve to divide the, the patio, we will be, build a new construction of a single-family house. Right now, we're thinking about fifteen hundred square foot, single-family house, brand-new. If you have any questions?
You, you've applied for a permit to remodel the, the, the house on the east side of the lot?
Yes, we have given, given the city the permits, the full set of permits, they approved some of them. Honestly, I had a panel with the previous G.C., which I change right now to a local G.C. that located in North Miami, that the first G.C. did some mistakes. It's, you know, my cost to refixing them and to bringing the building up to code, and the new building and the existing building to meet the setbacks on the patio.
I have a question. Now, you say you're remodeling the structure, but then you wanna tear it down, is that my understanding?
No, 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 we're not tearing it down. We complete remodeling from the brand-new floor, brand-new roof, brand-new kitchen, brand-new outside exterior stucco. So the house will be basically brand-new. We're just using the existing foundation and structure.
The issue is that the parking garage has to be torn down and a portion of the structure.
There's a portion of that has to be torn down, correct?
Yeah, I have, if you guys wanna look at the plans, I have the demolition plan to demolish the garage to bring, and rebuilding the garage to meet the setback of the lot.
And is this, uh, is this planning, or are you planning for this to be your residence?
Residence, single-family, yes.
Your residence?
No, no, we are a development company.
You're a developing company? So what you wanna do is with a single-family or a residential two, which is basically single-family homes, you wanna take that property, divide it up into two, and create two houses.
Two single-family houses.
Which normally, every other house in that neighborhood, are there any other structure staff in that house, in that neighborhood, or properties that have a similar?
Most of them.
I, I, I mean, there, if you look at the plans, cause, uh, they're, uh, it's, it's a small map, their lot is actually, it's probably like two lots that have been combined together.
Together.
But.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's, 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 the minimum lot size.
What I'm, what I'm saying, though, are all the other lots in that neighborhood the same size as this lot that?
No, 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 no. There, there may be a few one like this, but the majority of them, they own like, you know, about eight thousand, nine thousand.
Because what I'm looking at the diagram here, I, I, I'm seeing large fronts and, and depth with single-family houses on it. So my, my, my concern is that the integrity of the neighborhood is for single-resident homes on large pieces of property. So what you're kind of saying, and, and my, my problem, Mr. Chairman and other board members, is that are we kind of setting a precedent, whereas someone could come in here, let's say I have a large piece of property in Breeze West, which I do, I have a big corner lot, and I decide, okay, I wanna split that up and make two houses on that.
No, no, but, I mean, with all due respect, the minimum lot size in the R two district is six thousand square feet. This is an eighteen thousand square feet property. I mean, i-.
But that's not what I'm looking at here on, on the diagram. I'm looking at lots eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen.
Again, I, I will have to go by what the code tells me to do. The minimum lot size in the code right now for the R two single-family district is six thousand square feet. I mean, we, I don't have any.
Technically, you're saying that lot could fit about three houses?
That, that would be the requirement of that district.
Okay.
But the neighborhood has many homes with lots the size that currently exist.
Yes, I think that was your question, yes.
And what I'm saying is, those, those people could do the same thing, correct?
Um, they, they can, cause, cause they can, as, as long as they may do it.
In other words, if we, if we allow this, and technically, and council weigh in legally on this, we, we then are allowing, by wavering this, allowing a loophole in our ordinance or in our zoning regulation, saying anybody that has a large piece of property can, can divvy it up. And, and, and put a lot more structures on it.
It's currently not prohibited, so I don't know if you can call it a loophole. Uh, because if, if the subdivision, still, you end up with two parcels that are larger than the minimum requirement for the area.
I understand that.
You are changing, uh, uh, to answer your question, is, yes. In a way, you are changing the character of the neighborhood if the majority of the properties in the neighborhood happen to be a single lot, similarly sized properties.
So again, getting back to what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is that this gonna affect any other neighborhood with somebody with a large piece of property, Keystone, Breeze West, or any.
Those are different zonings, different requirements.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
I am in this neighborhood almost every day. And I can, I don't have it with me, but I can prove you guys there is almost eighty percent of the property sitting on lot sizes eight thousand square foot to nine thousand square foot. And some of them do have a big lot. But my lot is not, not a, not, not a majority. And I can actually send you many, many addresses. I'll have small-sized lot in this neighborhood. I look at this issue actually before I even submit the plat waiver, because this is what we do, and we looked at the neighborhood. And there's a lot of houses with a small, uh, piece of property.
No, granted, there are, but there also are a lot of properties that have large, large lots.
The majority are small, not big.
Well, yeah, majority, but I don't, well, I understand what you're saying. So is, I've driven by the property a couple of times, as recently as yesterday. And I don't know that there's any definition of remodel that seems to apply to what you've done. I mean, there is, there is one wall, no roof, no nothing, the floors, the walls are gone. It's, it's basically a demolished piece of property.
How you can remodel, this is a major remodeling, but how you can remodel without taking down the roof, taking down the walls? Basically, we are changing everything in the, in the lot. And I have, if you wanna look at the plans, I have them over here.
I have photos, I mean, I took, it's, it's, why don't you just tear it down? I'd be, I'd actually be much more inclined to support this if you raised the property, brought both pieces of, 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 both pieces of property up to code, cause it sits in a flood zone.
I will do it, but the neighborhood, unfortunately, you know, the, after we're gonna sell the property, we lose a lot of money if we tear it down and rebuild it for the ground up. So basically, we're just using the, the base foundation, and there's a brand, brand-new roof, there is a brand-new exterior walls, there's a brand-new kitchen, brand-new floor, brand-new bathroom. Everything is brand-new, except the existing foundation. So it's a brand-new house, basically.
So it won't meet the flood standards?
I can show you the, do you wanna see the plans?
I'm, I'm just asking you, is that gonna meet code for?
I mean, to answer that question, and that would be a substantial improvement that have to meet on the new elevation, whatever elevation applies to that flood zone.
So these, both of these properties will adhere to code two thousand and sixteen?
Yes, and then, uh, if the building official can confirm that, if he was present, yes. Cause any substantial improvement or new construction, as per FEMA regulation, this is why the city is a CRS, uh, Class Five, because we adhere to all those stringent, you know, regulations to make sure that we get those credits, you know, when we apply for CRS, you know, so the insurance premium for the community can be low. Yes, all of them, and even, uh, any substantial improvement, any meaning that any improvement where the cost is more than fifty percent of the appraised value of the property, they would have to adhere to the new requirement.
Have you seen the property?
No, no, I haven't seen it. So, I mean, I, I've seen the, the, the building permits, but, but I'm saying, you know, it, and, and we do have those permits, and then which are still being reviewed. So any new property would have to meet those requirements.
But there is no way.
And there, there will not be issues at speed of occupancy if they don't meet that.
There is no way to rebuild without destroying. I know the property right now look bad from the outside, but there is no way, you know, to make something new without tearing everything down.
That's a demolition.
Demolition, it's not completed demolition. I have the demolition here, it's a demolition of a garage, roof, interior walls, exterior, a sheeting of the ceiling of the walls. So basically, the whole house is new, just a shell, is the old shell, the shell of the house. So this is why the house look like that right now, because we removed the roof, we removed the walls, we removed, and we're gonna remove the garage soon.
Is it true that you've overstepped, though? They started stop work order out there now?
Yes, because I had the first G.C. only apply for a partial demolition, which usually I'm not in the property. I hire a G.C., I give him project, I sit in Dania, my office, and he basically apply for a partial demolition. I have, this why I brought this with me, to show you the whole demolition plans was given to the G.C. But right now, we changed the G.C. from, actual, from the City of North Miami, gave me recommendation, we changed the G.C., he's gonna start on it in a week.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mike?
Uh, through you to the.
Yes, go ahead.
Applicant. You say you've done other properties in North Miami?
In North Miami, no.
Is your mic on?
So this is, this is your first one in North Miami?
Yes. We come into the city to develop, you know, and make it nice. Of course, it's a business, but.
How long would it take for you to complete this project?
Uh, roughly between four to six months.
Did you have any other alternative plans other than splitting the property with perhaps maybe demolishing that property, or let's say rebuild it with a, a much nicer single-family home?
I, I understand.
On that property, rather than splitting up the property and speculating, if I could use that term, on whether or not the other piece of property would become something that could be saleable or, or income for you?
Because the cost of the existing old house from the bank was very high, and we paid all the liens and violation that was existing on the house since two thousand and ten. We paid them off, we bought the house, we've been in the deal very, very high compared to the sellable properties in the neighborhood. In order for us to financially be, succeed in selling the house, we have to split the lot to bring the money back to the company, because right now, the house in this neighborhood will not sell like a house in a high-end neighborhood.
The last, the last assessed property value that we got in our report was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars?
Yes.
Or do you?
So that's, that cost, with the cost of the purchasing of the house, you see, you see where, where I'm standing, it's gonna be a problem not to divide the land.
I have a qu- for the questions that this.
Any commissioners have further questions for the applicant? If not, we'll open the public hearing. All right, sir, you can have a seat for a minute.
Thank you, thank you.
Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is welcome to step forward. Good evening.
Good evening.
Whoop, that's not on.
Good evening, Annie Montgomery, twenty-eight-two, Laurel Lane, North Miami. Uh, the gentleman said, somebody said they were on the street every day, or nearly every day, I'm on the street just about every day. That property, if Dade County saw it, would call it an unsafe structure. I am very surprised that this commission, that anybody hasn't gone past and looked at this property before allowing it to remain there. I'm not against a waiver of plat, but I am against what's there and that's been left there. That is a disgrace. To tear down what's there and build a new home would just cost maybe a little bit more to build a new home, because I've built my own home and my daughter's house, and I'm familiar with construction. And it's, as far as the waiver of plat, that area, there are lots that size. The one on the west side is the same size. But as long as you have sixty-six feet frontage, you can get a waiver of plat. So both lots, they have sixty-six feet frontage. So therefore, the city does allow, because I've done it, you can get a waiver of plat. But to leave the structure that's there, it's an unsafe structure. And if Dade County were to be called, that's what they would deem it, as an unsafe structure. And it would have been really good if some of these council people, the commissioner, would have gone past this property. It is a disgrace. Plus, I don't know how there could be any permits given without having first have put up a construction fence for a demolition. There's no construction fence. It's a danger for children. Please do yourselves a favor before you vote on this. Put it on hold, whatever, but go past this property and take a look, and see if you want to live across the street for a few years of this. This gentleman knows what he was doing, they know, knew what they bought. They had plans to have a waiver of plat. They saw that the condition of this house hasn't deteriorated until they started the demolition, really deteriorated. So please, give it a lot of thought before you approve this. But if there were two new homes going up there, I would highly recommend a waiver of plat, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? It's all right, sir, you, you've, you've, you've had your opportunity, you're there. Anyone else? All right, Kevin?
Good evening, Kevin Burns, twenty-six-five, Alamanda Drive. I wasn't necessarily gonna speak on this particular issue, but this type of redevelopment is something that this city's gonna have to start addressing. We have oversized lots with subpar housing, usually off to one side or another. As the applicant said, this property was owned by the bank, it had deteriorated. And I think you're gonna see more and more, if you want affordable, sustainable housing in North Miami, if you go on the west side, Kevin and, Mr. Chairman, in your neighborhood, there are some very small two-one houses sitting on enormous-size lots that are twelve, thirteen thousand square feet. Now that the economy is improving, you have to balance what the economy and what the neighborhood will support as far as a resale of remodeled homes. We talked about that we want through the comp plan, we want people to come in, tear down the old places and, and rebuild. But the reality is that nobody's gonna come in, tear down a building, because if you tear it down completely to the ground, you now are subject to impact fees that will add an additional fifteen to thirty thousand dollars' worth of cost to a very modest, simple home to build. That's why it's legally permissible to tear down, you leave one wall standing and a, a foundation, and, and you go up from there. You'll, you see that done in Keystone, you see it done in San Souci, you see it done in every neighborhood, million-dollar houses that are torn down to a single wall. They don't wanna pay the additional impact fees. I don't have an opinion one way of this, but I'm glad that somebody's coming in to, to make an improvement to a neighborhood, take a piece of property away from a bank. We just had a property on Alamanda Drive where we fought with the bank. There was one wall that had been gutted by a fire. It took us eight years to finally get that structure demolished. If there, if what I, the comments I've heard that it's a construction zone, of course, they, they must comply with putting up a fence that can be done in a matter of hours or days. All the proper permits could be pulled. And again, if these lots are gonna end up at nine thousand square feet apart, a piece, yet we only require six thousand, you know what? This, again, something we're gonna have to look at in the near future, because not everybody can afford a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house on that particular street, who won't sustain it. Unless you want to keep the value of the, and those derelict houses on those streets and out of the hands of developers to come in and redevelop it. Be cautious, be, you know, you have to be a little bit flexible. Be ca- be cautious, be, you know, you have to be a little bit flexible. I love, uh, some of the big, open lots that we have in this city, but some of them aren't sustainable, especially when you have, um, again, like I said before, these two-one houses on there that's sitting on twelve thousand square foot lots. And so, uh, as you debate this, give maybe the, the benefit of the doubt that these people are gonna invest the money the right way and that the city's gonna, uh, make sure they adhere to the flood standards, that they adhere to all the rules and regulations. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Normally, I wouldn't, but Annie, go ahead, one more time, and then keep it, keep it simple.
I want to correct Mr. Burns on impact fees. If there's a home on the property already, those impact fees will only be on the other lot, on the new house. Even if you tear down it to the ground, the impact fees, because the property was used already for a home, so the swin- impact fees only on one, when he's getting a waiver of plat.
All right.
Also, I, I feel that it'll improve the neighborhood to have two new homes. I have done it. We've done it on a few streets here several years ago, ten years ago, here in North Miami. So it'll improve the neighborhood if two new home goes up. There, you have new plumbing. He's gonna have to go in the ground and get the plumbing redone. It has to be raised. This makes more sense to have this house demolished, then give him the waiver of plat, subject to him tearing down the house. Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this? Seeing no one else, public hearing is closed. It's time for commission discussion. To my right, Mr. Ernst.
I think I stated it before we heard from the petitioner. And I, I appreciate what Mr. Burns and, and Miss Montgomery expressed, uh, with regards to, uh, what we can do to develop affordable housing. However, I think we have to be very cautious with how we approach this. And in this particular case, I don't think there's enough merit to where I would wanna give waiver of plat. Um, and I wish I could have heard from the neighbors around them that own those properties to let us know how they feel about, um, their house being on a large piece of property, and all of a sudden, now they have new neighbors, which, uh, the setbacks may be different now. Um, that's something we didn't get into, which, maybe staff could elaborate a little bit more, try to help me get some direction on this. With this waiver of plat, are we minimizing the amount of setback between the two, two parcels of the land? Or will it remain the same as it is with, with this footprint? With the single-family house on it?
I mean, uh, the requirements of the code is that, you know, it's ten percent of the width of the lot to a minimum of seven-point-five feet. So.
So you could have seven-point-five feet between these two houses?
No, between the lot lines and the house. So actually, it will be fifteen total between the two structures. At a minimum of fifteen between the two structures. Cause seven and a half on each side.
Anybody on the panel have any suggestions about the problem that he has with demolition of the house? I, I think this, this is something that I'm not clear on, and, and the rebuilding of the structure. It's either being demolished or it's being re- rebuilt. Uh, it, it's kind of a vague point that, that's been brought up here.
Well, I can tell you that I, Ms. Montgomery, um, I wanna let you know that I did, I did drive by, okay? And the place needs to be torn down. It's really a wreck, okay? And I've seen some of the homes in this area in North Miami where people have taken houses that are burned out, that are derelict, try to, um, reestablish them using only pieces of what's, you know, uh, reha- quote rehabbing them. And they seem to all have problems. I, I think that, um, there's, I think that we're opening the door to problems with, without. It just, it's, if you drive by, you'll see. It, it should be demolished. It probably is an unsafe structure. And, um, I just haven't seen any of these rebuilds on derelict properties that have gone very well. That's, that's my input, Mr. Ernst.
All right, Mr. Danny.
One more question, the staff, though. Currently, there's, there's no mechanism within the city where the city has not tried to enforce the fact that if this house is, is derelict, that it should be torn down. I, that's what I don't quite understand.
No, that, that would be a building, a permit issue, and, and from the workers we have here. That, I mean, that's for even, and with these public workers. There, there have been two permits, there have been, they have been, I mean, maybe in previous, they applied for back last year. There was one for partial demolition of kitchen and bathroom wall, which was fully approved and permitted by the building department. And no issue of, you know, onset structure of, of whatever mentioned. And then the other pending application, which you have, as mentioned, which is noted here, I can share that. Which is always. And, and, uh, the application's pending, cause it.
It's gotten worse today.
That are also issued by the different disciplines. And they, they mentioned, so that's basically a structural issue. I mean, I mean, that's not something, you know, as far as, you know, for the purpose of this waiver of plat. And then that was, was just something, you know, uh.
But I understand, but, but if staff knew that there were, that there's issues with this, then why would they go ahead and present that to us for a waiver of plat?
I mean, those are, you know, perceived issues. The, the building permits and the comments we get from, for the building permits, there's no mention of onset structure.
A question?
No, also, cause they are. But, but we have, you have the list of comments here?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
All right, anything further from the right side? Um, all right, now, Mr. Bulleye, you're next.
I'm sorry.
The old public records, yeah.
Good evening. Uh, just a quick question. How are they going to build onto the structure? Um, because from what I see, as I was discussing with my colleague here, i- it seems like it, it's going to be demolished anyways. Um, as they make their, the, uh, I guess, uh, repairs or what have you to the, 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 the structure, how do you justify them not demolishing it? Cause it doesn't look like it's going to have anything left by the time they make whatever corrections they need to make to the structure to be able to build onto it? Seems like it's just a shell of a.
Are you asking the question to the developer?
Yes.
Or just to answer the developer?
Both, uh, both can answer, but mainly to the developer.
The question is directed to the developer.
So we're working with a building structure engineer and we're working with the architect. I think the building structural engineer should decide if the structure is unsafe. I agree about the fence, a hundred percent. We will put the fence tomorrow, it's not a problem. I just changed the G C's, my first G C didn't work, you know, as it's supposed to, and I agree with the fence. But with the structural, this is structural engineer, there is an architect drawing that involves, and they need to decide if the structure is unsafe, and then the building department will come and inspect if the structure is unsafe. To demolish the whole house will cost me over fifty thousand dollar, and I can prove it, you know, on, on paper. To, to your question, this is, this is how, how the house is gonna look like in the end. So basically, we're rebuilding, we're demolishing the outside. Yes, it look bad. So we're rebuilding the frame from brand-new frame, brand-new CBS block on the plans over here. A structural engineer and architect working on it to approve by the building department. So the building department will tell me if the structure approved or not. We have some plans that been approved, like brand-new plumbing. She mentioned plumbing. It's a brand-new plumbing. It's brand-new electric, brand-new air conditioning, a brand-new everything except the foundation. So it's a brand-new house.
So even though we, okay, so let's say we do approve it, it's still going to go through that phase where they'll determine whether it's safe or not?
You guys are proving that, that, the vision, splitting of the lot. The building department will go with me and the architect and take over the building structure and engineer, and the structural engineer will come and approve the, the structure. This is why we have twenty pages of plans for the house. So this is why I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Because there is no way to rebuild the house if the structure is unsafe.
But sir, to, to our credit, and to yours as well, you're coming to us, asking us about this plan.
Absolutely.
We're asking questions because we're not there physically overseeing this project. So we want better understanding as to what's going on, so that we keep the best interest of our community, uh, you know, at heart here.
This is the best interest of your community for us to develop brand-new houses.
Yes, but we, we want to develop homes, we want to develop businesses, but we want them in safe and sound environments.
This is why we're working with twenty pages of architect and structural engineer.
As I stated, that's understood, but we want clarity on certain things, and that's why we're asking questions.
Okay, no problem.
Okay?
As much question as you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bulleye. Do you have any further questions?
No.
All right, Mr. Pinchon?
Yeah, I, I share the con- I share the concern about reducing the size of the lots. I think it does change the complexion of the neighborhood. I drove through there. I'm not complet- I'm not, there are homes of different, lots of different sizes. But if they all started to become bisected, I think the complexion of the neighborhood changes, so I think there's a concern for that. As far as the waiver of plat, I mean, the developer is asking us for a benefit. He's currently in violation with building and zoning. And I'd feel better about considering the application if, in fact, he were compliant. He, he got a little ahead of himself, appears, I, I guess, and that's why the, that's why there's a stop work order. So I would have a problem supporting the application, A, because he's in violation with the city codes now and he has no history with us. And I'd like to know some more about the co- I'd like to understand some more about the cost associated with the demolition versus the house as it's currently sits, I believe is absolutely a hazard. And for the staff, before we vote on this, I think there is, when you get into the resolution itself, the second paragraph, the description of the property is inaccurate.
Which, which, um, Mr. Peshun, which page?
The property is approximately three-point-nine acres in size and is generally located on the east side of northeast Thirteenth Place, approximately a thousand feet north of northeast Hundred and Nineteenth Street.
What page are you citing?
The first page of the resolution.
Oh, the resolution, okay.
Second paragraph.
That's only noted, yeah. Only noted, yeah.
Are we addressing a correction to staff on this?
Well, certainly, that's, it certainly, that needs to be changed. I mean, it's the wrong location.
It's, it wa- it.
Am I concerned?
It didn't affect the, the title, which was the item that was advertised, but that, that's, that's gonna be, that could be straightened out.
All right, so just so I can clarify something here, uh, Mr. Gallos, effectively, we have an acknowledgement that the resolution is an error. Is that correct?
If there's a scribbler's error, it's not critical, but it will be amended.
All right.
The title remains accurate.
The title remains, but it's a scribbler's error as to the location of the property.
Exactly. The title remains intact, which is the, the item that was advertised.
All right. All right, uh, at this point, we've closed the public hearing. Each of you had your say. I'm no construction expert. Certainly, it's my gut feeling that the waiver plat as an isolated issue is permissible. That's my personal feeling. The construction issues are a different element, and that's why we have a building department that issues and weighs in on permits. And that's their job to follow once, once he proceeds on the waiver plat. We know already that the parcels have to have the appropriate elevation and proper setbacks and all of that. There's no variances being requested for that. These would be two essentially new homes. The only thing remaining on the existing structure is the slab and a wall, and they can go from there. You've all raised perfectly valid comments. I think it's time to put this item to a vote and see where it falls. We have a motion to either approve or deny.
Or approve with conditions. Those are your options.
Which way do you wanna start?
Well, we need a motion on the floor from someone.
Motion to approve.
Chairman?
Yes?
I will make a motion to deny.
All right, Mr. moves for denial. We need a second to discuss it. Bob, you're second, or Bob Pinchon seconds. We have a motion and second for denial. Do we have any discussion on this?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Bulleye?
I'm a little torn. I, I, I do believe if he takes it to, um, he already said that it still has to go through two more phases, and they'll, uh, decide whether it's an unsafe structure or not. So either way, he still has to go through that process. So, um, I, I don't know how I feel about denying it right now.
Well, feelings aren't the issue here, though.
Of course, of course. I, I.
Done this one way or the other?
Okay, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not going to deny it.
So you're voting in opposition to the motion?
I am.
All right, thank you. Clarify that. Now to my right, uh, Mr. Ernst, of course, it's your motion to deny, so we go on to Emmanuel.
I'm not gonna deny it.
You're gonna vote to approve, so we're now sitting two and two, all right? Uh, Mr. McGearmade, what is your position on this?
Well, um, the, my feeling is that to deny it with the, with a condition, um, that the structure be demolished, which I think is a reasonable, and, and I think we s- it was cited that we could possibly do that, is that, am I, am I not correct?
You can't really deny with that condition. You, you deny, it's over. If you approve with a condition, that's different. But the motion is to deny the waiver of plat. And so we have to vote on that existing motion. So you either vote.
Well, if I vote to approve, then I can't raise the issue of, of, I mean, if I, i- i- in other words, I'm sort of like gonna catch twenty-two.
I, I'm well aware, but that's, this is the, what it's, what it all comes down to. We have two votes to deny and two votes to approve.
Okay, well, in that case, uh, I'd vote to deny.
You'll vote to deny, I vote to approve. It's a tie vote. What does that do?
The, the motion doesn't pass. Of, um, a majority for approval.
Okay, very good. So the motion fails, right?
Can I make a motion?
It's up to the chairman.
Yes, you're allowed to make a motion.
All right, um, I, I think that what, what he, I, I think in listening to the audience and the other members of the panel, um, I think we should approve the waiver with the condition that the property be properly demolished.
But as he stated, I mean, it wouldn't be economically feasible for him.
Well, he should have figured that out before he, you know, before he, he did that.
Yes, sure, once the motion fails, we can have another motion. So make, make long story short, Commissioner McGearmade, you are making a motion to approve the waiver plat with the condition that the existing structure be demolished. with the condition that the existing structure be demolished.
Right.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Prior to the waiver, correct?
As an order, a point of order, um, that determination falls on the building official, not us. So, um, perhaps the issue here is that this item is not ripe for review because it seems that there, there, there are issues concerning the land development regulations here which have not been fully addressed. You have concerns on the structure.
So maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves.
But that concern has to be addressed by the appropriate official. We cannot dictate a condition that is relegated to someone else to make. If this property is unsafe, then the building official will say so, will have to say so.
Well, then, could, could I, uh, propose a motion that we table this until that portion is determined, or is that out of order?
You know, there, here, this is, I'm gonna remind you of your duty to tonight, 'cause, just to put it onto focus, uh, section three dash eight oh two requires that, um, you review the waiver plat to ensure that it's in compliance with the land development regulations and, and the comprehensive plan. Uh, there's no doubt that it's in compliance, the waiver, this kind of waiver plat would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, but there's some issues I think that are being raised that may touch upon the land development regulations. That is, the fence was not placed, I think the, the, but, but it's still, it's, it's still a code. Um, the fence, the issue of the fence, the issue that there was a stop order to which the applicant admitted, albeit it was not part of the, of the record. But if there are issues with the LDRs, these are valid issues to perhaps not kill, but to postpone to another day so that these issues can be fully addressed.
Well, that's what I was, no?
Exactly, so, I mean, it is a consideration for you to make, you could also approve with conditions, deny or-
How far would that set him back in his building plans?
I, I really, you know, the stop order was news to me. The stop work order, I, you know, I wasn't, so, I mean, this must have happened, did it happen recently? Okay, well, well, these are issues that the building official has to-
Uh, counsel, back to my question, would it be inappropriate then for a motion to table this until the next meeting so that these administrative LDR questions can be resolved and, and brought back to us?
Well, you know, it's, it's certainly within your purview, I don't know how realistic that would be to the developer, uh, but he needs to understand that he's facing a denial, potential denial, and I don't know what council, he will go to council for ultimate, it's gonna go to council, so, um, I would ask that question of the app, of the developer. If he's willing to, uh, postpone to have some of these answers, um, brought before the, the board for further consideration.
Well, to, to the members of the commission, um, although we have a lot of issues that we're wrestling with here, the reality is the waiver plat four square is permissible. There's no sound basis to deny the waiver plat. The, the questions pertaining to the condition of the existing structure are up to another department, we, we can't deal with that. That's not before us, it is not within our, our realm to address. The, i- if the building department ultimately says, look, you gotta tear it down, then he, he's gonna have to tear it down whether he likes it or not. If the building department says the engineering plans are sound and that we can rebuild on the existing slab, then so be it. And, and that's, that's part of it. But the waiver plat is separate from the condition of the structure. And because the waiver plat is separate, I would recommend approval of the waiver plat and let the building department deal with the condition of the structure. However, that would require an affirmative motion to approve it, and the chair does not make motions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Um, fully understanding where we are in this position and with the advice of counsel and, and your input, um, I would like to make the motion that we approve the waiver of plat.
I would like to second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the waiver. Uh, moving to my left, Mr. Pinchon?
No.
You deny, Mr. Ernst?
No.
All right, that's two and two, right, one, two, three, that's three and two, Emmanuel?
I'll, I'll approve.
You approve. All right, so the waiver plat is approved on a four to two vote. All right, thank you. Do we have any other matters to come before us tonight?
Uh, I would just mention that, uh, we received, you know, our OAK report, which is, uh, ob- objection, recommendations and, um, and comments from the state regarding the submission of the comprehensive plan.
And?
And it's, it's, it's quite substantive and then, uh, uh, the consultants are working on, on them and then so before, and that would come back for the transmitter. Once they address all those comments and talking with all the state agencies, you know, address all those comments, that would come back again for the transmitter hearing.
Are you going to share those comments with the planning commission?
Uh, uh, exactly, I will, I will-
Well, in advance, not the day before?
No, 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 we have the comments, I will email them to you, 'cause we just receive, we just received them. So I will email them to you and then the consultant, you know, has been charged to work on those, to address all those issues. And, uh, and I know that he's, he's, some been talking, there, at this point, there can be no more amendment to the complaint, 'cause whatever was transmitted, we just have to address the comments from the state and then, you know, he, he had the transmitter, had the, oh, adoption hearing and then transmit to the state, you know, for the final approval.
Will, will we affect any decision making, um, as far as the comments go?
Um, no, I mean, no, basically, we just have to address what they tell us to do, we just have to do what they tell us to do at this point. We cannot make any change to high densities or any other policy changes unless specifically stated in that report.
Okay, and they're all doable?
I mean, they're doable, I mean, 'cause some of them is a matter of clarifications and then there, there was, you know, some data and analysis that was provided to the states, 'cause they're not really too familiar with our, you know, uh, bonus density units, I mean, pool. So, I mean, I guess, you know, the staff are in board right now, they not, they were not there when, in two thousand and seven when we submitted the complaint. So, basically, I mean, just a matter of communication at this point, but some of them, you know, it just, it was something that was omitted, you know, and then, but, you know, just policy by statute, um, state requirements, basically.
Okay.
Well, we anxiously, uh-
I, I will forward those comments.
We do wanna see the comments from the state, we wanna understand what they're, what they're looking at. It's going to help educate this commission as we go forward.
Exactly.
It's always better to do this in the light of day rather than out of a dark closet.
And then we have one hundred and eighty days to address those comments, so, so we, you will get them, you know, as soon as tomorrow.
Let's not wait for one hundred and seventy-nine today, let's get the comments out to all of us.
Yes.
And then we can discuss this month to month, uh, as we move along here so we understand the process.
Exactly, I will do that.
All right, very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is there any further matters to come before the planning commission?
I mean, the date of the-
We said on, uh, February the ninth.
February the ninth is the next meeting, all right? Anything else, no?
For the applicant, uh, your item will go for final approval to the city council, likely February the second, okay? Uh, yeah, comply with the building official.
Kevin, is there something that's, that we're missing here? Otherwise, we could all go home.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Burns, twenty sixty-five, Alameda Drive. Um, I, as you all know, the FIU issue was postponed, um, and I came here tonight to make some comments on it and that, um, now that we have a little bit of time before it comes back before you, you should be asking for the latest studies that they have, the latest updates of traffic, the latest information that they have currently available to them should be made available to you. Any traffic studies, any impact studies that FIU currently has should be shared with the city. Because this ser- this document is a serious document. And you're approving their master plan that started in two thousand and ten, it's gonna go to two thousand and twenty, this portion. So, um, just as a, a recommendation, is to make sure you have as much information. The document refers to this campus plan, um, that, uh, is available out there if you search for it, uh, but it should be much more easy for the public and other people in the community to, to get a hold of and look at. There's a, a lot of concerns in that particular document, um, that, uh, maybe this will give staff time to get to, get it to you all for your proper, uh, review, thank you.
Thank you, well, knowing, the item was stricken from the agenda, I don't wanna-
And I would urge the, the, the chair to go ahead and read the title and just indicate on the record that still, as of this time, there's no, no one from FIU in attendance.
All right, we can do that.
Just, just for the record, um, to indicate on the record that we did allow for time for them to arrive, but as of the reading of the title, that no one representing FIU appeared. Thank you.
For the, for the record, before we go further, this is, this, we're referring to PCO one dash sixteen, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida approving a campus development agreement in substantially the attached form between the city of North Miami and FIU Board of Trustees, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to finalize negotiations pertaining to the sale and conveyance of the city's existing onsite sewer system to FIU.
That's point of order, Mr. Chair, you're reading, that's not the, uh, the amended.
Oh, well, that was-
It should be-
No, we've just done that one, so now we're doing, let's see what this is, so this is, well, oh, I see, you've stricken that. So what it is, it's a resolution of the mayor and city council of North Miami, Florida approving the execution of the campus development agreement in substantially attached form between the city of the FIU Board of Trustees in accordance with, well, this is quite a bit different from what was originally submitted.
Substantially.
You know, the first time around, they were asking to buy the, the water and sewer system out there.
And that happened, uh, in two thousand and eleven.
You see, th- this is an entirely different ballgame because, obviously, in, in looking at the early documents they submitted, they talked about studies done in two thousand and twelve, which included extending one hundred and thirty-fifth street all the way back to the campus as their alternate road, something that the city is absolutely opposed to. You are aware of that?
If, I, if I can, I looked at that document and that particular change was not in the current master plan that, that, that they sent you the link to. We didn't get the master plan, we got a link to the master plan. So I went to their link and loo- read it unbelievably, but I read the entire document and there was no change to one hundred and thirty-fifth street, stated. But they did discuss the major roadways and the impact of their, their development on those roadways. That was a, a portion of what the impact of their plan, of their ten-year plan will be retroactive to two thousand and ten. And then there's a, should there be some costs associated with any development for infrastructure or roads, we're to determine what the fair share is between the city of North Miami and the state, FIU. So, a, a, a problem that I had, and I would address this to the staff, is when I was, I had to go back and search through the records to get this information and the traffic impact study that they gave you, and it's summarized on page eleven forty-seven in the document, there is a, they have completed a revised traffic impact study some seven or eight months later. And where they give us a green light on all the major intersections as far as what the impact of the traffic will be, their level of service grades to a hundred, to Biscayne Boulevard and to one hundred and fifty-first street are now F. And they say they can't bring Biscayne Boulevard up to standard without two jo- two additional lanes of traffic from one hundred and thirty-fifth to one hundred and sixty-third street. Which is quite different than the report they submitted to you guys and the report you looked at for us to approve. And that's just, that's just on the internet, guys.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might-
Mike, go ahead.
Bob, you're absolutely correct. There's a, there, and even in this current document, there's a lot of open windows in this document that really can be seen in various different ways. I think we have a city master plan which is coming back to us. We have the FIU master plan, which nobody's seen, Bob has seen it, Bob has gone online and seen it, but from my understanding, there's been changes to that. We have Solomia. I think what we need to do, my, my thought is, rather, that's how things get snuck through, when people do a little piece here, a little piece there, little piece here, a little piece there, and a lot of things go unnoticed and get skated through. My thought is, Mr. Chairman and the staff, that we really have a, I hate to use the word 'cause some people say we have too many of them, but we need to have a workshop that really says how do all of these three interconnect and work in a uniform manner that's gonna be, you know, that's gonna be in unison with all. Because I just have a feeling that if we do it piece by piece, I mean, they said they have a campus plan, all they gave us was a sketch, an outline, we have no idea, they said, well, we're gonna build a hotel, maybe it'll get done by twenty. And they, we really have no idea of what they're gonna do there, where things are gonna be, et cetera. Um, a- and I just think we need to have a workshop to just ferret all of this out at one time. Where does our city master plan, Solomia's master plan, FIU, all come together to give us a real clear picture of what is going to be, uh, happening in the city?
Well, frankly, Mike, I concur, this, this raises some really serious traffic issues. If the master plan, as Mr. Pinchon has laid out, requires two additional lanes on Biscayne Boulevard, that's gonna take funding, significant funding from the state and the federal government. If that's gonna bring one hundred and fifty-first street down to a, to a grade of F and there is no funding formula put out to be matched for the state of Florida and the federal government and Dade County and some small portion probably from the city, then the master plan can't be approved. If they're gonna maintain their interest in the one hundred and thirty-fifth street access point, which the city is adamantly opposed to, the master plan can't be approved. And if they haven't reached a consensus with Solomia to tap into Solomia's spine drive to connect to the FIU campus, I, again, I don't see how the plan can be approved.
Yeah.
And the point's well taken, we don't have the plan in front of us. Sure, we can all spend the next few hours going to the internet and search it out. I think FIU needs to present a master plan with all the details and all the copies to us in hard form for us to digest and review. I think it's premature to put this on the, uh, agenda at this time until we get the documentation. And I agree, there's gonna need to be a, a workshop, and I think the heavy focus is gonna be on traffic impact as to what would need to happen to one hundred and fifty-first, what would need to happen to Biscayne Boulevard, and what would need to happen to the Solomia spine road with a connector to the FIU campus in order to make all of this development actually work. To go ahead and rubber stamp a master plan with an admission that the roads are inadequate is a disservice to everybody, the city, the university, Solomia, and any other person that wants to come and build or act or function in the city of North Miami. So, is, is staff in a position to affirmatively raise these issues and drive this bus? Or is staff not in the position? We, we don't know where you guys are on this and we're, we're kind of looking for you to tell us that you can or can't.
I, I mean, uh, eh, those are some valid points and then we will sit down with, uh, the FIU Board of Trustees and then we're gonna raise those concerns. And then one, one of the requirements of that section, of that, uh, of this Florida statute is to anticipate, you know, the cost of, you know, on the public services of city's infrastructure and then for them to pay their fair share of, of that. So, if, a- and then, eh, as me, Commissioner McGervin mentioned, when you look at, you know, we cannot look at this, you know, piecemeal fashion, we have to look at, you know, everything- We have to look at, you know, everything in its totality, and then knowing that we got, you know, Solomia coming in, and then others that impact that in the, in the next five, ten years. So we have to be proactive, and then we will have that dialogue with them, and then, you know, how can they best, you know, address those anticipated issues, and then we will have-
Well, let's be-
With all due respect to that, I've read the doctrine about their fair share. And the last line is, notwithstanding this provision, in no event shall FIU be required to pay more than its fair share.
Right.
The, the concept of what is their fair share isn't, isn't discussed.
See, there's, there's too many if ands, there's too many, yeah, there's- Exactly. There are-
No, that's, that is statutory.
It's really statutory, but, but we can tie, you know, the statute, we can put that type of language in there, because we went through this, uh, last time, when, when the infrastructure was sold to FIU that the city built, and it was a hundred percent dedicated to FIU. We made them pay their fair share to the tune of almost three hundred thousand dollars. We were able to then ascertain what fair share is. We could come up with a better indication of what-
You know, there, there's just, that was then, this is now, and as I said-